Good evening. Thank you. Good evening. I will call to order the Planning Commission meeting of Monday, August 12th, 2024, the regular meeting. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance if we all stand. Mr. Carney, can you lead us?
Mister, you have to be. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, free to God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We should... Damian, can we do the roll call?
Vice Chair Crapman is absent. Commissioner Lee? Commissioner Carney?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner McMorris?
Here.
Thank you. And Chair Schwartz?
Here.
Thank you.
Tonight's meeting was livestreamed on cable channel three and all our online platforms. Tonight, to prevent any comment... overlapping comments, each commissioner will be called upon to speak on each item. Now is the time for public comment, set aside for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items that are not on the agenda but are within the subject matter of the commission or the jurisdiction of the commission. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the Planning Commission cannot answer any questions or take any action on public comment items until such time as the matter may appear on a future agenda. If you do wish to address the Planning Commission, there are speaker cards on the back table. Once completed, you can give them to Damian, and the people will be called to the podium one by one. Each speaker is given about... is given up to three minutes to speak. Go ahead. Do we have public comments?
Yes, sir. There was one submitted online from Randy Liu. Mister Liu said, "Hello, to whom it may be considered, thank you for getting to this comment. This is an insight from a daily commuter that does not drive. I am an Alhambra resident, and I have my daily commute on Mission Road with a scooter. I am asking when there will be a possible redesign of Mission Road. This main arterial road serves as a quick way for people to drive past 40 miles per hour through the city during the morning and evening when people are getting to their destinations using this main road. It gets heavily congested with traffic. This is also the time when students nearby from San Gabriel High School and San Gabriel Mission School... high school are dismissed from class. A decent amount of students will walk along Mission Road to and from these two mentioned schools next to 40-plus miles of traffic. This causes concern for the safety and well-being of the students who use Mission Road as their route and to and from school and home. I have also seen students use the unorthodox path that is between the train fence and the stripe of plants and trees as the route to the San Gabriel High School. I would even say that this is even safer than the given sidewalk on Mission Road since the unorthodox path creates physical barriers between the students and the speeding cars. How would the student get to the other side of Mission Road? They would have to cross four lanes of traffic, two per direction, to feel safer when they walk to school. Last month, there was a repaving of Mission Road and Ramona Street to Santa Anita Street and even Valley Boulevard from Delmar Avenue to New Avenue. I'm wondering why there wasn't a plan to include a mixed-use path on either side of Mission Road and Valley, whether that would be redoing the sidewalk that is a path on either Mission and Valley, whether that would be redoing the sidewalk that is alongside Mission or using the other side on Mission Road that is next to the train tracks, or even on Valley, a major hub of business that could benefit from bike infrastructure since unplanned trips, bikes, and sustainable transportation create unplanned visits. Human-sized bike/infrastructure is proven and shown to be cheaper than car infrastructure and benefits businesses. Traffic congestion is one of the last things I would like to touch upon. Mission Road has horrible traffic during peak hours. With the school year starting soon, it will only get worse. A redesign of Mission Road starting from Santa Anita Street to San Gabriel Boulevard would help with relieving congestion since it would incentivize people to use another form of transportation. There was a large turnout during the active SGV mission-to-mission event back in April. The most important section would be from Santa Anita Street to Ramona Street. Since the majority of cyclists are students, this would allow students being able to travel safely on bike instead of adding to the traffic and congestion issue by getting dropped off by their parents. I've also forgotten to mention the majority of cyclists are either students or adults that are in the older demographic. These major arterial lanes consist more than four lanes, are putting young students and older adults in danger. Please consider redesigning major arterial lanes and, to be safer, streets for people that are out of cars. Apologies for a lengthy comment. Thank you for your time and reading this. Thank you, Randy Liu. That was the only public comment received.
Thank you. Okay. None of those... Okay, we will close the public comment period. And Commissioners, it talks about consent calendar, but pretty much that's the minutes of the July 15th meeting. So let's discuss those. Hopefully, you've had a chance to read the minutes. Are there any comments or concerns relating to the minutes for the July 15th meeting of the Planning Commission?
Yes, Chair. Just want to point out one discrepancy in the votes for the last item that we voted last time.
Yes.
It was three yes and then one no, not the four yes and then one no. So there's a...
It says... It does show three yes and one no, and then an absent. Isn't that what you... Isn't that what's there?
This would be in the motion line, so staff has noted that it will be corrected to reflect three. The vote does show the three votes and then the one no.
Okay, okay. Because like, on the meeting minutes that I got, it says a four yes, so correction need to be made.
Correct.
Thank you for pointing that out. Anything else? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes with the correction? I'll move.
I second.
Okay. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. So Vice Chair Crapman is absent. Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
All right. Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner McMorris?
I'll abstain because I was not present for that meeting.
Okay. Chair Schwartz?
Yes.
Thank you. Three As, motion passes.
Okay. On tonight's agenda, we have some public hearing items. And before we begin the items, we'll ask the Planning Manager Samantha Tua-Sartre to go over the public hearing procedures for this evening.
Yes, thank you, Chair and members of the commission. Again, copies of tonight's agenda are available on the city's website at www.sangabrielcity.com. And it's also provided at the entrance along with speaker slips if there are speakers for the items this evening. If you wish to speak on an item, please write down the item number that you would like to speak on, and speakers will be called up one by one to the podium during the public hearing portion of each item. And each speaker will be given up to three minutes to speak. There are three public hearing items this evening to be considered by the Planning Commission. For each item tonight, staff will provide a summary of the staff report, followed by clarifying questions from the commission. Then the public hearing will be open, and the applicant will be provided the opportunity to speak, as well as any members of the public. Once the public hearing is closed, the commission may ask additional questions of staff or the applicant. However, once that portion is closed, then the item will move into Planning Commission deliberation. And so with that, Chair, staff is ready to present item 3A.
Terrific. Item 3A. 529 East Valley Boulevard, Suite 108A? 106... Yeah, 108A. Planning case number CUP 24-004. The applicant is S&amp;G US Inc. And Christine?
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, members of the commission. The item before you tonight is a request for the approval of a conditional use permit to allow the onsite sale and consumption of beer and wine with a Type 41 ABC license for an existing business at 529 East Valley Boulevard, Suite 108A. The subject property is located on the north side of Valley Boulevard between Lafayette Street to the west and San Gabriel Boulevard to the east, and is developed with a two-story commercial shopping center known as Sunny Plaza. The project site is zoned MUT for mixed-use transit-oriented development within the Valley Boulevard's specific plan area. The applicant currently occupies a 1,782 square foot tenant space, which is Suite 108A on the first floor of the shopping center. Both surface and subterranean parking is provided onsite, and the building features two levels of commercial uses, which range from restaurant uses to retail, service, and office uses as well. No additional parking would be required for the proposed alcohol use. The applicant's business, Hibiki Barbecue, they offer Japanese barbecue-style cuisine and currently operates from 11:30 a.m. to 11:30 p.m. daily, and there is no live entertainment request with this application. The applicant requests a CUP for a Type 41 ABC license for onsite sale and consumption of beer and wine only. No distilled spirits would be allowed on premises. And I just noticed that there's a typo on screen, so it should just say no distilled The San Gabriel Municipal Code requires that the Planning Commission consider the nature and use of real property within a 500-foot radius of the site when approving a CUP for alcoholic beverage sales. The existing business is located within a two-story commercial building. The properties directly north of the project site are developed with single-family residences. The properties to the south consist of commercial centers, and the properties to the east and west include commercial retail businesses. Planning staff and the San Gabriel Police Department have included conditions of approval to ensure that the proposed use would be compatible with its surrounding uses. The conditions of approval from the police department include limiting the sale of beer and wine to only be served in conjunction with food and requiring the installation of an additional surveillance camera onsite near the cashier. Management should immediately notify the police department of any crimes that occur inside the business location or any areas under control of the property management. And the police department can also seek review of any CUP for this location and request reevaluation for public safety concerns. The proposed use is compatible with the general plan based on economical 4.1, creating a vibrant business community, as well as economical 4.2, to stop sales tax leakage from San Gabriel adjoining communities. In order for the commission to approve a conditional use permit for alcoholic beverage sales, all of the required findings must be made. Staff was able to make all of the CUP findings, subject to the recommended conditions of The project was reviewed for compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act, which is CEQA. The project is exempt from CEQA per guideline section 15301, which is a Class 1 exemption. The public notice for this project was provided in the following ways: mailed notices to all property owners and tenants within a 500-foot radius. The notice was posted at the project site, as shown in the photo on the screen, and agendas were posted at City Hall, Post Office, and the Public Library, and it was also advertised in the San Gabriel Sun on August 1st, 2024. With that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve planning case number CUP 24-004 for a conditional use permit at 529 East Valley Boulevard, Suite 108A, to allow the onsite sale and consumption of beer and wine and grant the determination of public convenience and necessity for an existing restaurant business, subject to the recommended conditions of approval. That concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Commissioners, do we have questions of Christine?
Hey, Christine. Just a additional information. What is the alcohol density in that area?
In the subject census tract, there are eight on-sale licenses. So the same Type 41 licenses that the applicant is requesting.
I think you presented this is on the first floor, right?
Yes.
Okay. No further questions?
Anybody else have questions of Christine? No? Okay. Then, is the applicant here?
Yes.
We'll open the public hearing and hear from the applicant first, please.
Good evening, Planning Commission. How's everyone today? Good, thank you. My name is Raoul Cueva, and I am associate with Liquor License Agents. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, S&amp;G US Inc. The applicant is here. The applicant is applying for a conditional use permit for sale and dispensing of beer and wine for onsite consumption in conjunction with an existing restaurant with 1,882 square feet. The restaurant, Hibiki Barbecue, is a traditional Japanese cuisine restaurant serving good food with quality ingredients and friendly service. The use of the premise will not be altered, but the addition of alcohol sales is requested as an incidental use. The restaurant offers a full menu throughout its business hours. Incidental alcohol sales will only be sold in conjunctions with a meal order. So customers will have to order meals in order to be served alcohol. That's one of the important things. Each employee will also be trained in proper procedures for serving alcohol beverages, including how to check identification appropriately, monitor patron consumption, and deal with difficult situations. Onsite training will occur daily through observation and manager interaction in order to help this grant... in order... excuse me, in order to prevent alcohol-related concerns. The staff will also be made aware of any conditions of approval within this grant pertaining to business operations. Daily activities, training, and operations of the business are always monitored to ensure responsible and safe environment for all individuals dining and working at the location. The applicant understands the importance of maintaining a secure environment and strives to contribute to the integrity of the existing neighborhood's character. The applicant is looking to create an enjoyable experience for his guests. This is a family-oriented restaurant serving good meals that can be shared by families and friends. The license is requested as a secondary feature in order to complement the meals offered to the restaurant's diners. The inclusion of a liquor license will offer a complete menu to the guests and add to the overall dining experience. The applicant is dedicated to maintaining a responsible environment and adhering to the conditions of approval set forth by this grant. I am here to respectfully request your approval and answer any questions you may have.
Okay. You made reference to the conditions of approval. Does that mean that the applicant has gone through them and is comfortable with them?
Correct.
Including the police requirements?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anybody have questions of the applicant?
Thank you for coming in front of us. Just a couple of quick questions. Relating to the parking?
Yes.
Do you happen to have, like, separate parking lots, or like, it would be on-streets of parking for the patrons?
So you mean if parking spaces were to not be available onsite? Yes. Is there somewhere else?
Uh-huh.
Um, did you happen to know about the parking? Is there somewhere else where your customers can park besides onsite? Street parking?
Yeah, they have the come on the back. They have a couple, like, the side park.
In the back?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, I'm looking at the site plan here. Let's see. So he did say that they do have the street parking, but they do have a section towards the back of the premise that has additional parking as well.
Okay. So the only thing, like, my question regards to is, like, if there is a separate onsite parking, then patrons would have, like, freedoms of, like, after alcohol consumptions, they can go to their vehicles and they just drive off, right? Or catch the, you know, Uber?
Uber.
Right. But if it is on-the-street parking, then, you know, it can be a little rowdy, it can be, you know, it can have a...
Right.
...not a friendly situations with the neighbors.
Right.
So this is the only thing that I'm thinking of.
I mean, from the presentation, it seemed as though no additional parking would be required, based on the Planning Commission... the planner's statement. So it seems as though there's plenty of parking for patrons to come in and actually park onsite versus having to look for parking outside, offsite.
Okay, okay. So if we have, like, sufficient onsite parking, that would be great.
Yes.
The second question is hours of operations, right, for the alcohol consumptions?
Yes.
Can you remind me what the hours?
Yes. It's 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. daily.
And that is the closing... 11:00 p.m. would be the closing of the restaurants?
Well, they would offer food up to half an hour before they close.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions of the applicant? Sean? George? Okay, thank you. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else from the public that wants to speak on this item? Do we have any?
Chair, there is a comment for a card from Stanley Sito for support of this item. I don't know if he wishes to speak.
Sir, just actually put the next item behind.
Oh, okay. You put the item on the side. Okay.
Disregard that, sir.
Okay. So there are no other speakers, we'll close the public hearing. And, all right, Commissioners, it's time for discussion, deliberation, and potential motion if we're... if we're... if we get to that point, so...
Chair, I'm in support of the motions, and since... my thought process was, like, we need to have a sufficient onsite parking. Seems to me that our staff, city staff, has done diligent work making sure we have enough onsite parking spaces. And also, the applicant's making sure that they're going to be serving alcohol 30 minutes before the closing of the restaurant. So I feel comfortable for approving this motion.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner, I also feel comfortable approving this. It seems like a fairly standard request in an area where there's other similar restaurants that are serving alcohol as well, and they're closing well before 2:00 a.m., which is when bars close. So I... and with the, you know, the staff recommendations, and they're agreeable to all of that, I don't see any problem with that, and I hope that it will help improve their revenue and our sales tax.
I concur. It's... I can't see any downside to this. It seems like a very natural thing with this type of cuisine to offer a chance to have a beer or wine with your dinner. And I see no downside at all.
Okay. With that, then I'd like to make a motion to approve the Planning Commission case 24-004.
A second.
Okay. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner McMorris?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz? Or, excuse me, Chair Schwartz?
Yes.
And then Vice Chair Crapman is absent, so four As, motion passes.
Congratulations.
You guys... You guys definitely...
Yeah, good luck with the continuing operations.
Thank you, guys. Thanks for your business.
All right. The next item is a 529 East Valley Boulevard, number 178A, planning case number 23-014. The applicant is Erwitt Brothers LLC, Erwitt Cold Pot. And Marlon will do the presentation.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Chair Schwartz and members of the Planning Commission. The public hearing item before you tonight is for a conditional use permit to allow for the onsite sale and consumption of beer and wine with the Type 41 Alcoholic Beverage Control license at an existing restaurant also located in the same shopping center at 529 East Valley Boulevard in Unit 178A, planning case number CUP 23-014. The proposed project is located in a commercial development at the north side of Valley Boulevard between Lafayette Street to the west and San Gabriel Boulevard to the east. The subject property is located in the mixed-use transit-oriented development zone of the Valley Boulevard's specific plan and has a general plan land use designation of commercial-specific plan. The restaurant is located in Unit 178A of the commercial shopping center. The interior space of the restaurant measures 1,633 square feet and has been in operation since March of 2023. Erwitt Cold Pot is a full-service Chinese food restaurant that specializes in coldfish and other seafood dishes. Hours of operation for the restaurant are Monday through Sunday from 11:30 to 10:00 p.m., which comply with the city's regulations regarding alcohol service. The restaurant will serve full meals, as shown on the menu included as attachment B to the staff report, during business hours and does not propose any live entertainment. San Gabriel Municipal Code, Section 153.162, states that "In determining whether to approve a conditional use permit application for alcoholic beverage sales, the Planning Commission shall consider the nature and use of real property within 500 feet of the use, and in particular, the location of similar nearby uses and the location of residences, parks, schools, and churches." The shopping plaza is currently occupied by a variety of restaurants, retail clothing stores, medical and insurance offices, and a health and fitness spa. Other similar commercial plazas are also located in the vicinity of the subject site. Nearby schools include Gabrielleino High School and Dewey Elementary School less than half a mile from the project location. Conditions of approval to prevent loitering and late-night operating have been included, as well as the requirement that at least two staff members are onsite during normal business hours. Planning staff and the San Gabriel Police Department have included additional conditions of approval to ensure that the proposed use will be compatible and harmonious with its surrounding uses. Conditions of approval include the limitation of business hours to no later than 12:00 a.m., that alcoholic beverages shall be sold only in conjunction with food, and that management shall take appropriate measures to ensure that patrons and employees do not disturb neighbors. Additionally, the police department is requiring the installation of video surveillance system and a centrally monitored alarm system, and that management shall immediately notify the San Gabriel Police Department of any crimes that occur inside the location or in any areas under the control of management or to patrons of the location or at the request of any patrons of the location. The general plan land use designation is commercial-specific plan. This land use designation allows all the uses permitted by the general commercial designation, including retail, service, office, recreation, amusement, and other business... and other commercial businesses which provide goods and services for the local population and those businesses which are targeted towards visitors and commuters. The proposed use also supports the following goals of the city's general plan. Erwitt Cold Pot offers unique seafood dishes that would benefit from the addition of alcoholic beverages to be served to complement the dining experience. Additionally, the restaurant will create additional opportunities for San Gabriel residents to dine locally and provide access to a unique dining experience. In addition to the required findings for issuance of a conditional use permit, a finding of public convenience and necessity is also required due to the subject by... excuse me, subject site being in a census tract is determined to be over-concentrated by the Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control. The census tract currently has eight on-sale licenses. The threshold is four. The required findings are... can be seen on the screen there. The project was reviewed for compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act. This project is exempt from CEQA per guideline section 15301, Class 1 for existing facilities. This project is exempt from CEQA per guideline section 15301, Class 1 for existing facilities. The item was also noticed at the project site, advertised in the August 1, 2024 edition of the San Gabriel Sun, and notice was sent to all property owners and tenants within a 500-foot radius. Tonight's agenda was also posted at City Hall, the post office, and the public library. Finally, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt a resolution of the planning commission of the City of San Gabriel, California, approving planning case number CUP 23-014 for a conditional use permit at 529 East Valley Boulevard, Unit 178A, to allow the onsite sale and consumption of beer and wine and grant the determination of public convenience and necessity at a proposed restaurant subject to the recommended conditions of approval. That concludes my presentation.
I have a couple of questions. You said, first you said they, they close at 10:00.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Excuse me, yeah, 10:00.
The CUP number, is this an application that was made last year?
Yes, it was inactive for a few months.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Other questions for Marlon?
Just Marlon now, just the same typical questions. You guys done calculations for the onsite parking spaces and stuff?
Yeah, that, that would have been done when the use of a restaurant at this location was initially proposed. As far back as our business license records show, this space has actually always been used for a restaurant. So those calculations haven't changed.
And this is on the first floor or second floor?
First floor as well, Unit 178A.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
How long has the restaurant been on operation already?
Since March of last year.
Sean, anything? Okay, okay. Then we will open the public hearing. Is the applicant here?
The applicant is here, yes.
Okay. We should hear from the applicant.
Good evening, members of the planning commission. My name is Stan Zito and I'm here representing on behalf of Erwin Cold Fish Restaurant or Cold Fish Pot Restaurant, on behalf of their conditional use permit for the on-sale of beer and wine for their existing restaurant. And just want to make a few comments regarding the restaurant as well as the parking. I understand that Commissioner Lee had some concerns regarding the parking situation within the shopping center. So yeah, this is, this is an existing restaurant, so as Mr. Cervantes said in his staff report or in his presentation that it's been a restaurant. So I guess the, this review process is, unless we were to include the, or make the restaurant bigger in terms of the dining area or adding more seats or tables, which would then affect, effectively affect the number of parking spaces that, that, that would be required. But since we're not doing that, it's an existing restaurant, we're adding the use of the beer and wine, so I guess this is not part of the review process of this application. So it was deemed that since the parking, the restaurant has always been there prior to us applying for this application for the conditional use permit. And the city's parking code didn't change to make it more restrictive. So I guess parking was not part of the review process in this regard. So in any case, and so basically, this is a restaurant that, it's, it's, it's a Chinese restaurant. It's, it's, but it's not your, you know, typical, typical run-of-the-mill Chinese restaurant. It's a very unique restaurant. We serve cold, our specialty is cold fish pot. I really don't even know what that is exactly, but so there aren't any restaurants in, in this area that, that's really similar to what we serve. And so we just want to be able to add the sales of beer and wine to this restaurant and basically complement the fine food that we serve.
The conditions of approval.
Oh, we read the staff report. We're, we're in agreement and we accept all the conditions as outlined by staff.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do you have questions of the applicant?
Just, just want to explain, since you kind of brought up how I came about my question of the parking, so let me explain a little bit. Since this is a conditional permit in front of us that we need to decide on, right? One of the deciding factor for me is whether is it going to be harmonious with the neighborhood, right? So I understand this is an existing restaurant. However, if it is not going to be harmonious and with the neighborhood, that would be my deciding factor. That's how I came about asking that question.
Oh, I understand.
Okay. Thank you for understanding. For, the first of all, I just want to say thank you for doing a business in San Gabriel. And what is the cold pot?
Well, as I said, to be honest with you, I, I really don't know exactly what that is, but it's, it's a, it's not leftover fish. It's not, I mean, it's not, it's not a week-old leftover fish, but it's, it's something where it's not, because fish is normally, they prepare it hot in the Chinese traditional cooking. It's, comes in, when you cook it in a pot, it's really, it's, I mean, it's literally boiling in the broth. But this is really cold. It's a cold dish.
Thank you, thank you. No further, Chair.
Okay. Anybody else with any questions? All right, thank you.
I heard it's really good. I haven't tried it. I mean, the, the business owner asked me to, you know, come and try it. It's really good. And so I'll, I'll try when I get a chance.
Yes. Are there any other, do we have any other public comments on this item?
No additional public comments, sir.
Okay, so we'll close the public hearing and have a discussion amongst the commissioners. Anybody want to begin tonight on this one?
Again, to me, you know, it's the same, same area as the previous applicant, asking for the same, same permit. I think that, you know, I have no problem with that. It's in, for the same reasons I supported the last one. It seems appropriate and it closes at a reasonable time. So I don't have too many concerns about, you know, patrons just showing up and being unruly. So I'll support this project or application.
I'll support it also and for the same reasons that Commissioner McMorris stated. It does not seem that this is the type of a restaurant that would present any kind of problems.
Chair, I feel confident in supporting this applications.
Okay, terrific. And I as well. So I will ask anybody that'd like to make a motion on this item.
I'll move.
I second.
Okay. I assume that's approval. All right, let's have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner McMorris?
Yes.
Thank you. Chair Schwartz?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Krappman is absent, so four As, motion passes.
Okay. Congratulations. Thank you. Okay. The third item tonight is the Valley Boulevard specific plan amendment relating to the ground floor office use in minimum densities, GPA 24-02. Samantha?
Yes, thank you, Chair and members of the planning commission. The item before the commission this evening is a proposed amendment to the Valley Boulevard specific plan. So as indicated in the staff report as well as the attachment, this item first began in 2021 as San Gabriel, as well as many other cities, were preparing to reopen. City Council had requested community development to provide an update on really the status of where businesses were at, at the time. This department's economic development division at the time had surveyed businesses, property owners, managers, and provided that report to the city council. There were feedbacks provided to the city council from property owners and business owners about taking a look at the specific plan, the allowed uses, and the parking requirements in particular as businesses were reopening and really the type of market that was coming back post-pandemic. As part of that meeting, the city council had asked for additional supplemental information, mostly tax-related information. That report and information as mentioned is provided as an attachment. So the item came back two months later. At that time, the city council had requested for staff to take a look at proposed standards and amendments to the specific plan. At that time, coincidentally, was also the state of California's requirement for the housing element update. So really, for the past couple of years, all the focus was put on that item. And this particular amendment was put on the back burner as, as the city prioritized all its efforts to obtain a certified housing element. And then also within the past couple of years, just focused on some of the housing program again to maintain that compliance with state housing requirement. And so as, as staff was completing those assignments, then last month, the city council had asked for a follow-up of this project and at which time, staff did bring the item back and summarizing some of the information that will be presented to the planning commission this evening on existing conditions on Valley Boulevard and really the standards and criteria to take a look at and whether the standard should remain in place or what type of criteria would be appropriate for Valley Boulevard at this time. And so the table here, it summarizes the zones that are in the city. Generally, there are seventeen zones. This does not include the residential zones. Six of the zones permit ground floor office use and those are highlighted in the table. Three of the commercial zones limit office use to the, to the second floor and higher and then the remaining commercial zones permit ground floor office use. And an amendment to the specific plan will be required in order to allow office use on the ground floor and those are in the zones that currently do not. And that is highlighted with the red that's in the table against six zones with only one of the zones currently allowing office use on the ground floor. And this is specifically within the specific plan. So this map right here is the zoning map within the specific plan. The red indicates the areas that do currently allow for office use on the ground floor and those primarily are on the south end, south of Valley Boulevard, along San Gabriel and Del Mar and as well as a small portion that is on West Valley Boulevard. At the time when staff brought the item to city council, the city council asked if there was a colored map to make the areas a little bit more clear. There is one, it is land use, the corresponding land use to the zoning map and essentially the pink areas is where office ground floor is currently allowed. And what the planning commission will be taking a look at this evening would be the purple, the green, and the orange. And here is a snapshot of Valley Boulevard. It does not include the entire area of Valley, but it's an aerial view generally showing the properties that currently front onto Valley Boulevard as well as some street views. And so essentially, the criteria that the planning commission will be taking a look at this evening are really the criteria for where to allow ground floor office use and then also the number of units that are to be allowed office use. So the proposed criteria within this amendment, first, it defines the units and this is based on feedback that was provided by the city council at the July 2 meeting. The, the city council had stated to maintain the commercial service type uses of restaurants that face Valley Boulevard, do not change the uses, allow for those units. And so in order to capture really the description of those units, three criterias have been outlined, one being whether there's an entrance that face Valley Boulevard. Second, if there's a storefront. And then third, if it runs a budding sidewalk. And then if the unit does not fall within those categories, the council had recommended establishing a percentage. And as planning staff got together and started thinking about percentages, ten percent, fifteen percent, essentially what that would result in, whether a plaza range from one to ten units or eleven to fifteen, ten percent gets you a point, decimal point. And essentially, as we were talking it through, just it's a lot of math at the counter and in particular, if it's not something that a first-time business owner is familiar with or a property manager or property owner. And essentially, you're having a percentage and decimal discussions at the counter as far as the number of units that are allowed office use. So the planners, the planning division, we discussed it amongst ourselves and really what would be most straightforward, once a unit is determined to not have that frontage off of Valley Boulevard. And essentially, this was the breakdown. And these are proposed numbers this evening based on the planning commission's discussion and then on to city council. Any of these numbers can change. This is not set in stone. This is just a formula that staff has had discussed just based on the applications received at the counter as well as conversations that staff has had with the public and then also based on guidance and recommendations from the city council. So this is just the proposed criteria and the standard for this evening. And so again, here is a snapshot of Valley Boulevard. It shows the footprints generally of some of the existing properties. There are obvious ones that have frontages off of Valley. Some of those may have units that do not run adjacent to Valley and those would have the potential of being an office unit. Those that have a section that is adjacent to Valley Boulevard, those would fall into the criteria that does not allow for office, but then there's substantial potential as the building runs towards the rear portion of the lot. So again, this is just, just a snapshot of some of the properties along Valley Boulevard. So the second proposed amendment to the specific plan this evening relates to establishing minimum densities. And this is in response, as mentioned earlier, it's one of the housing programs that is proposed within the, the housing element that was recently adopted. And staff saw it as an opportunity, as staff was looking at the office use on the ground floor to also, to also follow up what the housing program to establish a minimum density within Valley Boulevard as shown here. Again, the six zones within Valley Boulevard, six already have established densities. And the proposal this evening is to establish the minimum densities. These are not maximums. So as indicated in the staff report, densities, the average density is based on the projects that have already been constructed along Valley Boulevard, range between sixty-one to sixty-nine units. units. So they have been developed at higher densities, so establishing the minimum densities of 40 units to the acre is consistent to the densities that can currently be found along Valley Boulevard. But at the same time, still allowing for that higher density if the property can support the number of units. And so here are some of the objectives that have been outlined within the housing element. Again, it's to encourage for mixed use projects along Valley Boulevard, is to promote reuse of underutilized properties, also to accommodate for development on a sliding scale. And then also to permit densities around transit, which is one of the focus along Valley Boulevard and what makes Valley different from Las Tunas, for example, or San Gabriel and Del Mar. And so again, here is the proposed density for the remaining three zones on Valley Boulevard. And so the recommendation before the planning commission this evening is to adopt the proposed resolution of the planning commission recommending that the city council adopt an ordinance of the city council amending the Valley Boulevard specific plan relating to ground floor office use and minimum densities within the specific plan. And this concludes staff's presentation.
Okay. Questions for Samantha? Go ahead Sean.
So to clarify, these are all things city council has already discussed, right? And they wanted you to kind of come up with a plan based on that, right?
Yes, so the council discussed the broader direction to take a look at criterias, to take a look at percentages, to take a look at the minimum densities. However, as far as the exact number, what those criterias are, that is subject to the commission's discussion this evening. Both items have been presented to the city council.
Okay, on the house, on the densities, housing densities minimum, there's, so on a portion, well, three of the, it looks like the six areas on Valley already have a minimum density of 40. And then for two of them, you're recommending 20 to 40. Just wondering what the rationale is, why not 40 like everyone else if we're looking to build housing?
Oh, thank you for the clarification. So the underline represents what is proposed. The numbers that are not underlined is what is currently existing and allowed for those areas. So those particular zone allow for densities 20 to 40. Right now, the remaining three only define floor area without defining a minimum density. But by defining a minimum densities, a developer or property owner knows that when a project comes in at minimum, they would be allowed a density proposal of 40 units to the acre.
So, okay, I guess I'm still confused. The ones that are underlined, that's what they are already?
No, that's what's proposed, yes.
But then there's three on the bottom.
That are existing.
Those are existing and we're not recommending that they also be a minimum of 40?
Not at this moment.
Okay, is there just, I just wondered why, I mean, if we're trying to build the housing, more housing, what was, why did we decide not to even look at those?
Again, that is subject to the planning commission's discussion this evening. 40 units to the acre was really just to fill in the blank. That's currently not defined in the three other zones as opposed to having the defined densities in the two or the three that is shown on this table. However, if the planning commission would like to increase the densities that are existing, then that's something that staff can take a look at and can be a part of the commission's discussion this evening.
Well, yeah, I guess I don't have enough information to make a determination whether you should or not, but yeah, I, just from a purely housing perspective, considering that everywhere we need more housing, that would be an opportunity. But I guess too, the counter, I mean, the other side of the argument is you may not want, developers may not want to build units that big necessarily. So I understand that, but yeah, I just bring it up because it's a way to get more housing, but I don't have enough information to recommend those zones go up to 40 or not. My last question for now is on the, on the ground floor units for office space, just to clarify, what is being proposed is a 10% allowance of office space on, is that right?
What is being proposed is for buildings, with one to 10 units on the ground floor is one office unit. 11 to 15 units would be allowed to office units and so forth.
Okay, I got it. I don't have any more questions right now, thanks.
But let me ask one before I call on the other commissioners. The, the office space though, if I understand correctly, is going to face away from Valley Boulevard, not on Valley, not facing Valley Boulevard?
That is correct.
Okay.
Is the office space, is that primarily related to sales tax and on the theory that property facing Valley Boulevard or others should be commercial, so there's a sales tax?
That's correct.
Samantha, quick questions. So I'm a little confused, like why are we here and why are we talking about this office space not facing Valley and then, you know, away from the Valley and then why do we get to this point?
Yes, so as shown in the first slide, as the city was coming out of the pandemic and the closure of business operations, the city council had asked the economic division to really present where businesses are at, were they moving towards more online services? Was there really a demand for retail? Was there a high percentage of occupancy and just really where the market was at coming, coming back because a lot of changes and adjustment had occur during the pandemic as far, as far as how food businesses, for example, were more takeout with the restriction on dine in uses as well as retail uses, again, not allowing the public to go into the space, having to adjust to online sales. And so as the city was coming out, the council had asked, was there a high vacancy percentage? What was the demand of rental space? Were there high vacancies? Whether or not businesses were able to retain their business during the pandemic, whether they had to close their doors? And so that all occurred in 2021 as the city was coming back. And then based off of that and then also from feedback from property owners and business owners that as, as food businesses and retail businesses were not relying on storefronts as much as pre pandemic, whether or not there was the potential for office use to go onto the ground floor. And again, the other zones within the city, the C1, C3, they already allow for ground floor office use. Valley Boulevard, the specific plan limits office use to the second floor and higher except for the zones that, the one zone that currently does allow it and those were highlighted in the red and those were south of Valley Boulevard, on San Gabriel Boulevard and Del Mar. And so based on the feedback, based on really where the market was at, the council had directed planning staff to evaluate the Valley Boulevard specific plan to see what potential there was to allow for office use on the ground floor. Then last month, staff brought the item back to the city council to just get further feedback. Now we are three years, two years, three years post reopening and again, just really where businesses are at, whether the applications are still coming in, the types of businesses that are looking to rent space. And currently what staff is seeing, there are a lot of spas and medical spas and medical type uses that have interests locating on the ground floor. So just based on that information, this is what staff is bringing back first for the planning commission to consider and then based on the planning commission's action this evening, then to move that on to the city council.
Okay, my follow up would be, yes, like because of the pandemic, we have experienced such a like extraordinary in the business sector, right? So a lot of vacancies, people telecommuting and then the whole nature dynamic changes, right? So from the city perspective, what are we trying to accomplish? Are we trying to fill as much space, backfill it as possible, you know, on the Valley Boulevard plan? Is that what we're trying to do?
To allow for a little bit more flexibility for office type uses so they have options to be on the ground floor without taking away, as mentioned from Commissioner Carney, from the units that do have frontage off of Valley Boulevard, but so that they're not limited to the higher floors.
Okay, so if our goal is to fill as much possible as we can, why are we putting the restrictions on like frontage on the valley or it has to be away from the business? Why do we just let the business plate it out? And then if they think they have a business that they can achieve, they will pay like a premiums to get on the business Boulevard, right? Why do, why are we putting our hands in every parts and to make every rules for all the businesses? I don't think that is a good idea. Secondly, what is definition of spas? Is it office or is it, what do we define as?
So spas are defined as personal care, usually they involve facials. Those are the typical services that are offered, sometimes hair treatments, skin treatments. Then what puts it in the office category is when there are medical related procedures that are offered such as botox or anything that requires a licensed medical professional to administer the types of services, then that differentiates that type of use. But typically spas are pedicures and manicures and that type of beauty aesthetic services.
So if they want to rent or lease a space, frontage to the valley, can they do that? Like if we pass as recommended?
Yes, so it would allow for the ones that do provide those medical services to be on, oh no, it not on, not on the units that front Valley, but on one of the units that would be behind a unit that fronts Valley. But it would at least allow them to be on the ground floor as opposed to on the second and higher levels.
Okay, thank you. I will reserve my questions later.
So the business of this type could be on the ground floor if that was important to them, but not facing Valley?
Correct.
Essentially, we're reserving the Valley Boulevard's facing for retail?
Correct.
Samantha, adding office in Valley, on Valley Boulevard, facing away from Valley, is the office parking ratio different or less than the restaurant parking ratio?
It's less.
Okay, so in other words, it won't add demand to the parking area?
That's correct.
Okay, I think that's an important consideration. But we're getting a lot of applications for medical spas, you're saying? For medical?
That's a popular application currently, yes.
Yeah, I've seen that in other communities. Let me open a public hearing and ask Damian if you've got any public comments on this item.
No, sir, there's no public comment this time.
Okay, and there's nobody from the public here, so we'll close the public hearing. And we can either ask other questions of Samantha or we can have some discussion and deliberation at this point.
Chair, if I may, I wanted to ask a couple of questions to Samantha. I remember back in a, a few years back, the council has some kind of like law in San Gabriel to limit the numbers of massage parlors. About this spas, is it limited or there is no, any restrictions whatsoever in our city?
So there are no limitations in terms of if a business were to come in and to make an application as a spa that only offered, as mentioned, services for pedicure, manicure, facials and that is currently allowed as a commercial service type use. But then there is the limitation, if medical procedures were to be added to the services, then the business would be limited to the second floor. And then with this proposed use, it would allow for spas that do include medical procedures to go on the ground floor, not fronting Valley. But to your question or to your comment about massage use, that's a third category. That's a third category that when the regulations for massage was proposed, a full 100% massage related type business that has the distance restrictions and so I think that's what you're probably thinking of Commissioner Lee, that the number of massage businesses can only be along Valley Boulevard or within any area so long as there are so many feet apart from each other, but a standard spa where the primary use is not 100% massage, then that is considered a spa type use.
Okay, I'm still thinking about having a business like personal care or office space facing frontage into the Valley Boulevard, for me would be a good idea, right? But is there any known like negative impact that you see or like staff has experienced with? Can you share it with us like so we can put it into our considerations?
If the question is, is there any numerical impacts to allowing office use? I mean, as far as the use itself, as mentioned, the city's current C1 and C3 zones allow for office use on the ground floor, so outside of the specific plan areas, outside of Valley Boulevard, on Las Tunas, on the north end of San Gabriel and Del Mar, that's what you currently see where office is allowed is an application that a business can make currently. It's just that limitation is specific to Valley Boulevard, it being the more used arterial where there's a lot of vehicle pedestrian traffic and again, the concept is the mixed use type projects, you have higher densities, you have, you have the major transit systems. So the thought behind that is to preserve the ground floor units for the, for the sales tax.
Okay, so going back to like clarifications, if we do pass as proposed, right? Only Valley Boulevard is going to be impacted or like Las Tunas, San Gabriel, Del Mar or any other major arterial is going to get impacted or not?
No, this amendment is specific to the Valley Boulevard specific plan.
Okay, as proposed, right? Not facing to Valley, what does that mean by not facing? Is it like, okay, like intersecting Valley and let's say it's a small, small streets, right? Is it like, okay, like intersecting valley and, let's say, it's small streets, right? So looking at from that vintage point, so the office would be allowed on the minor street, not on Valley Boulevard? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, well, thank you.
Any other questions for Samantha? Okay, and we've closed the public hearing. There were no public comments on this item. So commissioners, we can have discussion, deliberation, and a motion if it's appropriate.
Yeah, I was just, yeah, I was just going to, I mean, I think Commissioner Lee, I was kind of confused about the same thing or the whole thing. Like, why are we limiting front? I totally understand, but I also think it's probably, I mean, I assumed, because this is a specific, a Valley Boulevard specific plan, that it probably had something to do with the aesthetic and the type of, that's the area we want it to promote, people to go for retail or restaurants, things like that, as opposed to, you know, other things that may be more concentrated in other areas. That, I mean, am I right about that? Is that, okay?
That's correct.
Okay, and then just quickly following up on Commissioner Lee's on the frontage. So it has to be facing another street? Or it just doesn't, or like the picture we showed where it has three sides? And on the two that aren't facing, could it be on one of those or no? Because that's on?
Correct, so it would only, so the one that is adjacent to Valley Boulevard, that is the one that would not apply. And on the secondary street, it would be allowed to be office use.
What if there's no secondary street?
Even if there's no, if it's interior, those would be allowed office use.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I don't have any specific questions. It seems to me this is all basically about getting as many retail establishments, tax collecting establishments as we can into a specific area. That's kind of how I see it. Am I moralist, correct?
Yes.
But Commissioner Carney, just remember, the main goal that it came about is out of pandemic, we, the city is trying to backfill as much space as possible, right? Why are we getting into the business of, you know, restricting? This business can go there and that business has to be off the streets. And then, you know, like let the economy plate it out, right? Like if the business you own can afford a premium, you know, like to rent a space on the Valley Boulevard, go for it.
Philosophically, I would tend to agree with you. Just in a general sense, you have a business, yeah, that's your business. You run it your way, put it where you want, pay for it if you want. In this particular case, I don't see any undue restriction in the terms that have been set forth in these amendments. I don't think that they are particularly onerous or restrictive. But I do agree with you generally philosophically, for what it's worth.
No, I'm like, I think the motion that we have in front of us is like, only the retail can be on the frontage of the business, right? The office space or spas has to be of this space. Correct me if I'm wrong.
The motion before the commission is what is currently presented. However, the commission can motion to amend what is proposed and to propose a different criteria and different numbers of units or to allow ground floor office, no restriction and to be completely on the ground floor to what Commissioner Lee has mentioned. Again, this is just proposed language from staff, but the commission can amend the recommendation.
Awesome, and also like I think like Sean, Commissioner Sean has some good points about the minimum density and stuff. So are we, do we need more time to think about that?
Yeah, from my perspective, I'm not comfortable making a recommendation on that just because I think I would want to know, I would want more information about how that would affect traffic. Also, if there's particular areas on valley where developments tend to be smaller. So, you know, we are getting some housing, but in certain areas perhaps developers don't want to build, spend the money to build something that must require 40 units, but they'll build something that has to require 20. So, I mean, ideally, in my mind, just from, you know, a general perspective, the more we can allow to be built, generally the better in terms of the housing crisis. But I would want more information about how putting all of those at 40 would potentially affect traffic, pollution, you know? Would it constrain development if we're saying you've got to build at least 40 units? So that's kind of my rationale. But I wanted to know why they were, you know, doing half and half there, so.
Here's a thought as it relates to the 40 units, the acre. You know, each project has to either meet the environmental requirements or there'd be an initial study related to each of those to see about the impacts. So I think that's a case where you say, well, we're adding minimum 40 units to the acre in three areas. And that's, that seems like a good thing vis a vis building additional housing. And realize again that an individual project has to meet environmental requirements. So, so there's that. The overall concept, I think, just to go back, if you read the July 2024 staff report, it's the council who suggested that we consider the idea of office away from the Valley Boulevard facing frontages. So I think that's where that came, this proposal came from. It still allows the frontage on valley to be commercial, retail or restaurants as they are right now, and I think that's what we want. The idea, the fact that medical spas are being proposed does not surprise me. It's not surprising. I've seen, I've seen that quite a bit in other communities. So it's just, it's coming to San Gabriel and that's, again, not surprising. So the question is, what we're being asked to do is consider this and the motion would make a recommendation to the city council that they make these changes. Isn't that correct, Samantha? A recommendation to the council?
I'll answer that. Yes, that's what's being asked of you, but you're not limited to that. You could make a motion to recommend the actions as planning staff has given you or you can make additional recommendations or changes that either the planning staff can bring back to you or can incorporate into the staff report when it goes to the council to say that this is what the commission recommended in addition to what planning staff is recommending. So you're a little more open than just yes or no.
Okay, thank you.
Yes?
Yes.
So Chair, if I may?
Yes.
If I would have to make a motion, I would take out, delete the other restrictions. I would let a business plate it out. If we need to restrict a certain type of a business not to be on a major retail, that would be another items either come before us or the city council has to make that motion. But with this, I think what we are trying to do is we're trying to be a business friendly environment, business friendly city, right? And not getting into the business of other people, that they run the way they want it. That is what I see it.
So I understand that you're saying office businesses can face Valley Boulevard, in your opinion? They go wherever they think is best?
That is correct. So that would be deleting a text from this motions that staff put it forward in front of us. You know, like restrictions of businesses would be off the, of Valley Boulevard.
So you're suggesting take that away?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Is that a motion or is that just your opinion? That's where you are, right?
That would be my motion. That is the one that I can support with.
And then Chair for part two, the number of, the ratio of office units to overall units, is that acceptable or is there an amendment to that?
Your motion, does it include eliminating the restriction on the number of office units as well? Or just that the location regarding facing Valley Boulevard?
I would keep the second part as the staff suggested, but changing the wording for the office space facing the, you know, the Valley Boulevard.
So there's your motion. The recommended action with a recommendation that we remove the Valley Boulevard facing requirement.
Is there a second? Huh?
Can I make a comment on that before? I just, I wanted to say, I don't, to me, it doesn't make any, I mean, for equity's sake, I'm fine doing that. We're still allowing the number of units on the ground floor. I guess the only rationale I can think of why city council, and I haven't watched that meeting, so I don't know, would want this is again, they want to create a certain aesthetic and promote a certain type of business within that strip of land in San Gabriel. And I'm assuming there's other areas that promote, people will go that promote office space and things like that. But it's not changing the number of units that are going down there. So if you have 11 to 15, the most you could have fronting valley of those would be two. So you're still, you know, getting that restriction. I guess I'm just, I'm agnostic. I can go either way, I'm open to it. But I'm just trying to process why it might have been put in there to begin with.
I'll second the motion. Okay, can we have a?
Sure.
Please.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Carney?
No.
Commissioner McMorris?
Yes.
Chair Schwartz?
Yes.
And then Vice Chair Crapman is absent. So three As, one No, and one Absent, so motion passes.
Just to follow up on what I said earlier regarding your options, the way this will go forward at this point, assuming that planning staff doesn't alter their position on this, it'll go forward to the city council with planning staff's recommendation as you saw it tonight. But what the staff report will also show is your resolution tonight to recommend that the city council remove that restriction.
All right. Thank you. All right, next is comments from the planning commissioner, the planning managers.
No comments, Chair, thank you.
I have a question for you though, Samantha. If I read the things correctly, the commission is allowing staff to do an RFP for amendment to the general plan? Can you talk about that?
Yes, thank you, Chair and members of the commission. That was another city council item to present an overview of the general plan. And as the planning commission is aware, on an annual basis, staff does provide the commission with an annual progress report on the general plan just to report on the goals and objectives and really all the programs and work that is done to achieve those goals and objectives outlined in the general plan. And typically what that translates to is whether it be regulations within the zoning code or something as broad as the specific plans. And so as the commission has seen, and in fact Commissioner Lee had pointed out that it was so comprehensive on the update items that staff was providing as opposed to just the annual reports. Because as staff had mentioned at the time, some projects tend to be multi-year, especially if they're bigger projects. And sometimes they may start in one year and not end three years later. And so as part of that annual update, sometimes staff does present those multi-year updates. But one broader item is that the current general plan is, was adopted in 2004. And here we are 20 years later. And the lifespan of a general plan is typically between 15 to 20 years. And then there's some value in reevaluating the plan just to make sure that it is consistent and compliant with state laws and the relevancy of the programs to really how the city sees itself growing. So it's definitely a big task is taking a look at where the city is currently and really thinking and imagining what the city will be like 20 years from now. So if we say 2024, then what we're looking at is potentially 2045. So potentially what the city will look like at that point in time. Staff's personal opinion, seeing the objectives and the goals outlined in the current general plan, there was definitely a lot of progressive and great ideas. It has led to all of the design guidelines that are, is currently utilized by the design review board. It has led to the preservation program that is currently overseen by the preservation commission. And it has really defined all of the areas and the intended uses for the specific areas within the city as well as the growth that's envisioned, not just for commercial development, but mixed use in housing as the planning commission has seen. And so that item was taken to the city council at that same July 2nd meeting. And the city council said, yes, it is the time to do so. However, there is the cost associated with such a large project. And so what staff has been tasked with is to put together and to work on that RFP. One, to get the cost for a comprehensive update or if not, maybe a phased project or if not, maybe focus on very specific elements, kind of similar to how the city focused on the housing element. So that is something that staff is currently working on just to define the task and the scope of that project. And that is something that staff will be happy to present to the planning commission just to provide that broader outline. Staff is not defining the objectives of the programs so that the commission is clear that is left for the community and as the project goes through the process. But it's really to define the task, making sure that it does include the environmental analysis that usually is attached with something like that as well as the public outreach program. So there are many components to that RFP, but that is what staff is currently working on.
Okay, thank you. So the bottom line here is, other than housing changes, the general plan, other than the housing element, the general plan hasn't been updated in 20 years.
That's, that's correct. So San Gabriel has 11 in total. The, the mandated elements, it's, it's either seven or, or eight, I should know this one. It's either seven or eight. But the housing element is the one mandated, mandated by state law to be updated every eight years, which is what the planning commission has seen. However, the other elements within the general plan, you have your land use, that is more your common one. There's circulation, there's economic development, as mentioned, preservation and safety, open space. So, so those are the ones that the commission may be aware of, but do not get as much attention as, as land use and housing typically.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for the update. Okay. Are there any commissioner comments tonight? Okay. Then we'll adjourn the planning commission meeting to the next regular meeting, which will be of the commission, which will be Monday, September 9th at 6:30 here in the council chambers.